About the meeting tonight. What's that?
We all sorry.
We have things to do. I appreciate that. Anybody who, you know, any questions?
Oh, sure.
Well, they got a.
We have.
They got a miss that they're going to be asking.
Yeah.
How did I know?
So it's just free.
I've got a stuff idea of a snapshot of where we were, where we're at.
It's dawn and then them sitting up there. They're answering some questions. Me too. I'm gonna say, you know, if you could find about three more.
He says Scott is he going to win?
Walkway downstairs. You what? Yeah, but you know, they tried. They offered one. What they, what they want to do and. Yeah.
Well, it happens only when, when you know that if I get in trouble, you're gonna.
Yeah.
It's just me out there.
Susan, is there a mic going to stand here?
Yes.
Where? Okay, handheld so that he can hear what's being said here. He'll hear us, but he will hear if somebody out there is speaking.
Southern. Oh, I don't see him.
Is that Obama?
Yeah. We need to start. You made a wise choice, sir. Oh, tell him, Karen, tell him, Karen. That wasn't very nice at all for me.
Yeah, he's probably calling in the rest of the week.
Yeah. Those big.
I couldn't hear you. Oh, yeah, sure. Oh, yeah.
There's just been truth out there.
I didn't tell you that.
How'd you get this? What was the sheriff said? What are you doing tomorrow? Just sound like that.
Yeah. Always have a good answer.
Oh, yeah. They had a big crowd.
Yeah, they had a real big old crowd.
Big enough. I didn't see either of you two there. The big enough crowd. I didn't see either of you two when I was there.
Did you?
Yeah, we performed over four.
Have they seen it? At the forge?
Yes, we gotta worry about.
I was worried.
I thought my step too early. I didn't know if they said tax. I thought, well. I don't know. Then he left.
I just think I called up. I just performed over one. He was down there.
We got, I see. We're close.
I do apologize.
Can you hear us, Matt?
Yes, sir. I'm trying to unmute my camera. There we go. Sorry about that.
That's all right. So we understand you're in an airport.
I am in a, just landed in Atlanta and I'm headed to Myrtle Beach as we speak. Uh, just trying to find my next gig. That's all.
Okay, well, we hadn't started. We're about to start. Craig, if you'd mind closing. Oh, there you come, very closing it. Yeah. This is workshop on Monday, October the 25th, 2021, nine eight nine. Nine ten AM, Van Zant County Commissioners Court. There is a quorum. Tonda had come by my office and we've got an issue. With Southern Software and I guess we can just start. Tonda asked for a workshop. I said, how do you, how do you want to proceed? She said, I think we're going to have to have a workshop. I said, we can do that. We'll set this, set it up for a workshop. So that's what, and it's the view only. That, and my understanding through it all, and there'll be several issues come out was that that Southern Software, I went back, reviewed the recording, said that if the sheriff would give permission, that they could give you, they could give you view only and everything, but I don't think you have view only. Okay, if, uh, if you want to start time, that'd be fine. Matt, make sure that. Yeah, yeah, that work will. And if you can't hear Matt, we, we will make sure you can hear also.
Yes, sir.
So I struggled a lot yesterday and last night with, with how to word all of this. And I haven't, I still haven't come up with a good answer. You know, Sheriff Hendricks and I are a lot alike in that we both are committed to getting the best out of our offices and, and the, the ultimate success of each of our offices. And sometimes it's difficult when you, you have the kind of attitude that he and I have of, of just get it done. Just get it done. Just do it. Yeah, sometimes it's difficult to stop and remember that we are only part of a big. We are one cog in a big, huge machine of the criminal justice arm of this county. And everything that we do individually for our offices or almost everything that we do affects the whole entire county and the success of the criminal justice part of the county. And so I think what has happened here is the decision was made, the commissioners approved it. Um, I had let my voice be known that I thought there were a lot of questions to be asked still. More information that we needed. This software and, and I think that it has had a huge effect on the rest of the county and the success of the criminal justice system. And we've run into a lot of problems. For the last 27 days, my office has been completely hamstringing in performing our tasks. One, sheriff went live with this and didn't tell anyone. The only way I knew is we come in and run our month, our morning reports and they're blank. You know, and we all knew it was supposed to come October 1st and that's great. Well, it came early and that's even better for him. But there was no communication to the rest of the county. I checked with Karen Wilson. She didn't know. We didn't know. All of our offices, all the courts, both the clerks and my office rely heavily on that. And like I said, for the last 27 days, my office has been functioning at about half capacity. We can do about half of our tasks. Uh, but we can't do the other half. Southern Software in that, in that meeting on August the 4th, um, that I was not at, I had made it known that I had to have a medical procedure that day. Uh, Southern Software said that we could, that they would give, if the sheriff approved it, they would give the DA's office view only access. That's great. There are no one asked, so it's not completely Southern Software's fault, but they didn't mention that we would be limited in our view only access to the number of licenses that the sheriff's office has. They have six licenses, I've since learned, for the jail management system. Well, Karen has two employees that need on it. I have 12 employees that needs on it. He apparently has six employees that need on it. So six, and, and now we learn well after the fact, well after that August 4th meeting. Now we learn that they are going to charge for that view only access unless we do it under his six licenses. Well, I'm sure that when he came up with the number of six, that that's what, that, that he needs all six of those for his people. Not to share with my 12 people and her two people and Susan's two people. So, so there's no way that my 12 and Karen's two and, and Susan's two, that's 16. There's no way we can all use his six. We'll be taken away from his work and, and he needs it more than us. So no one in the meeting asked, Southern didn't say, oh, but we're going to charge you for that. Now, and, and here's the other thing. They came and they did the install for the sheriff. And they left and went back to wherever they, they're from. North Carolina without even coming to my office to do the install. Now, I've been told by them three different explanations for that. And, and please, I'm not saying any of these are true. Okay, because I don't believe them. They did not come to. Nobody at my office would say they don't have keys. Our offices internally don't lock. I asked Travis on the phone and he said, oh, 400 South Buffalo? No, I never went there.
They saw in our office.
Right. And what they.
And they told us, no, they did not. Someone had told them that you were not there and they would not go up there.
Right. Well, I don't know, because I don't know what day it was. Right. There is somebody at my office from 7:30 till 5:30, five days a week. There is never nobody not there. The internal doors don't lock, except for one where the computer equipment is for Scott. Um, the internal doors don't lock. Somebody else, they, somebody from Southern also told me that they were told not to go because I had COVID. No, I had COVID in July. I did not have COVID when they were here in September installing. I don't know why they didn't go. I don't know what the answer is, but they didn't go to my office. Uh, another one told me that Natalia said that Natalia gave them a list of who all could have it. And the DA's office wasn't on there. I don't believe that. But that's what another one told, another one from Southern Software told me. So I'm getting all kinds of stories from them. But the bottom line is I have to have this and I have to have, I can't piggyback off of his licenses. Karen can't piggyback off of his licenses. This all goes back to CEGIS. Karen's people have to have this done, have to, what they use it for, they have to have done five days after um, the judgments are entered. Susan's office is the same way. So they've got five days. Karen's people are already getting kicked off because Steve's people are on it, as they should be. I'm not criticizing his people for being on it. They should be on it, but Karen's people are getting kicked off. Well, when Peggy has 20 judgments to enter the day after court, she's got to be on it all day. She can't log in and off, on and off 20 times. Same with Jayla in, in her office. So, it, you know, I think Southern Software should have told us there would be a fee for this. But in all honesty, I wasn't here and nobody asked. So that's where we are. I have no idea how much licenses cost. I could probably get by with eight or 10. We don't all 12 get on it at once. I, I had Hillary keep track on Friday. Um, she said there were six times that she needed at information from it that we didn't have. And in case you don't understand what it is, LGS Software, our case management system that ties to Karen's case management system, that doesn't start, that information doesn't come to us and doesn't start until the sheriff's department or the Canton PD or Will's Point, whatever law enforcement agency it is, brings us a case.
We're a little late.
And then that information is in our software system. So it's that period between when they're arrested and when I get the case. It's that I need access, that my people need access to other software. That's the time period when we're looking at bonds. That's the time period when we're trying to figure out who needs to go to grand jury. I have a grand jury Friday. I have no idea, no clue. Been in jail close to 90 days and who hasn't. No way to know. So, you know, again, it's about communication and, and, and knowledge. The decision was made somewhere along the line. I don't know if sheriff made it or if y'all made it or what, that there would not be a, a um, data conversion. Well, that's fine, but that means that, that, that means that we have to pay for Justice Solutions for the next 10 years, which is 260 something thousand dollars. Because we have to have that data. People that I put on probation for 10 years probation, six months ago. If they violate their probation anytime in the next 10 years, I have to have the data that's in Justice Solutions. So we can't just let it go. So we're going to be paying for it. The server, we'll, we'll be buying hard drives, servers, whatever those things are called for it. In addition to paying Justice Solutions 260 some odd thousand dollars for it. All of that is the kind of stuff that was never addressed in this that I think needs to be addressed. Scott and I've talked, oh, the other issue is public website. Again, an issue of no communication between Southern or, or any, or, or the SO with Scott. Scott's in charge of putting all the jail inmates on the public website. Every law enforcement agency in this county, all the federal agencies, as well as a lot of nosy people, use that website every day. My phone's been ringing off the wall. Tonda, why is that website not up to date? Why is that website not up to date? They're calling me to find out who's in jail. I can't tell you. I can't see it either. So that's where we are, gentlemen.
And I think that, and I went back and reviewed it. Matt was here on August the 4th. Said we can give conduct, the DA's office, we can give, when you say give, that, I mean, if I tell you, Todd, I can give you a car as long as Virgil tells me it's okay. You wouldn't think you'd have to pay for it.
Wouldn't think.
I mean, that, I mean, if I tell you I'm gonna give you something, I'm gonna give you something.
That, that's the way I took it.
That's, that's.
And, and that's, our last two software providers did not charge for view only access. So why, yeah.
Yeah. And that, and that's what view, view only, I guess I questioned, but why do we need a license for view only? Uh, if you.
It's our data. The information belongs to us.
It's all ours. If, 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 if we're only giving view only, what's the issue? I, I, I don't, I don't know.
And that's.
I wish I could back up about two years ago when Nat Data and everything and, and when, when we went with LGS. And now we went with Southern. It has been a mess. But I guess it always will be, you know, anytime you, and, and I think it, the, the sales tactics and stuff, you, you don't know. I certainly don't know all the questions to ask of this. But do any of you guys have any questions or comments? I guess, I guess I have one to Matt. Why would we pay for, why would, why do we have to pay? Or you're saying we have to pay for view only at the DA's office?
As we go off concurrent license, which was discussed at the meeting. It's per user, not per view only. So if everybody in Tonda's office signs on, they're using a license from JMS to be able to look at information in the jail, even though it is a view only. So that's the reason not everybody can sign on. And during the demo, I, we discussed how many people would be signing on to JMS. And we discussed it would be six at the time. And Tonda was asking for view only, which under, from what we understood, it would just be her, not her entire office. Now, one other thing I'd like to address that she was talking about was the online inmate list. Due to y'all having the Loner server, it is a security issue that we cannot put it on there. And that's the reason that the website is not up for it, for the public to use. It's just a security risk. And we're waiting for y'all's permanent server to come in and put that on there. And everybody would be able to see who is currently in jail.
What's the timeline on that?
Hey, Matt, uh, I was told that we could do it with a virtual server. So I have a virtual server ready to go and it's been ready for a week. That we could just put that software on that would pull that in and go to the website.
Okay.
Uh, been waiting on Jonathan. Jonathan's been supposed to have called me for almost a week now. Been told by two different people that Jonathan was gonna call.
Jonathan, okay, I will find out. Probably about just a couple hours because I'll be in, uh, at our users conference and I will find out about that. I, I was just told it needed, uh, the actual server. So if they're saying that it was a virtual server, I'll find out here shortly and I will shoot you an email that you know uh, what I've found out about that.
So Matt, what's the real reason nobody came to my office while y'all were here?
I can't answer that because I don't, I don't know. I wasn't there whenever Go Live was in process. I was in Arkansas.
So who was in charge of that? Because I'd like to know. I, I mean, a lot of accusations have been made. I'd like to know.
Uh, the project manager was over, uh, y'all's, uh, install, which was Mickey, uh, Bowlin.
Okay. I've never talked to him. Okay.
Now, I was able to talk to Jennifer and what she has agreed to do, uh, the normal cost of a license is 850 plus a hundred dollars in maintenance. How many license for your office, Tonda, and the clerk's office would be needed?
Well, I believe each of the clerks need two. I have, uh, 12 employees, I would say probably eight.
Eight total or between?
No, eight for, eight for me, four for the clerks.
Okay.
We didn't understand the price, Matt. Can you, can you tell us again?
Typically, the price is 850 for the license and then a hundred. Hold on, I want to try this again. Can you hear me a little better?
Yes. Eight fifty. Eight fifty annually?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. It's just 850 for the license and then a hundred dollars for your maintenance. A hundred dollars is, is to keep up with, uh, maintaining that license. But what I was told by Jennifer is the, uh, sorry, my plane was about to board. I was under the impression it'd be about 20 to 30 license for everybody in, in the county. But if y'all are just needing 12, she said that she could do each license at half price would be 425 and then a hundred dollars per license. And then what we could do is.
425 one time, 425 per year or what?
The 425 is for each license. So if you're needing the 20 license, bear with me for just a moment. The 425 is for each license. And then a hundred dollars to support that license. So the 425 is the one time fee, the hundred dollars is added to your annual maintenance. So if you're just needing the $20 or the 20 license, it'd be your annual maintenance would go up just the cost of the main, uh, maintain those licenses.
Okay, and you can, can you put it on all 12 computers, but only eight of us could use it at a time?
And then what we could do, then what she said is she'd turn it into a site license and then everybody in that county can have sign on at, have no problems.
Okay, so your answer to her question then, when she said put it on all 12 computers and just, just some of them using it, you know, aid at a time.
No, no.
Use it. You're.
No. No. We put it on all, all her, because what a site license does is make it to where it's infinite. So instead of paying that infinite amount that really high price, Jennifer has cut it in half, each license in half. And then go and turn it into a site license. So that way everybody in your office, Tonda's office. So that way, everybody in your office, Tonda's office, clerk's office, be able to sign on and never have to worry about getting kicked out.
Okay, so it'd be four twenty-five times twelve?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, I guess we're looking at Well, he's saying, oh, yeah, twelve, twelve.
Oh, yes, you're four, four twenty-five times twelve, and then
Matt, let me ask you a question. So this four twenty-five, that's a one-time fee?
Yes.
Yes, the four twenty-five is the one-time fee, and then the hundred dollars would be added to your annual maintenance, which would make it go up however many you're needing. And that would be the recurring fee, just maintain those licenses, make sure everything is functional, updates and all that.
A hundred dollars a year? For license?
Per license.
Matt, Matt, don't miss your plane.
Oh, no, we're, I'm still good.
Okay.
They're starting to board the, the priority in first class, folks. I don't have that seat.
Okay, so I have a question. My office runs a little different than Karen's office, so we take calls and everybody logs into LGS or whatever, if we're looking at somebody. People will call our office, everyone's trained to look up if it's a criminal call or whatever, to see if that person's in jail. So I'm wanting to make sure that, you know, I'm gonna have five, six employees and that everybody can log on. Maybe not all at one time, but just to make sure it's not on just Jayla's computer and my computer. We need to make sure that people in the office are gonna be able to use it.
That's, that's what the site
I just want to make sure I understand.
I'm sorry, no, the, the site license would make it to where everybody can sign on, and you wouldn't have to worry about just one or two people in your office. You, everybody could be signed on at once. Everybody in Tonda's office, everybody in your office, everybody in the sheriff's office, there would be no limit.
So is that license will be by office, not by individuals?
No, it would be by the county.
So that four hundred and twenty-five dollar fee is one time, not twelve times?
Four twenty-five times twelve, one time.
And then add the, you have to add a hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars.
So it'd be, it'd be total five hundred and twenty-five dollars per license. Okay, and then what we'll do is turn that into a site license. So everybody in the county can sign on, in Tonda's office, the sheriff's office, the clerk's office, anybody.
And then, and then from now, you would renew the, the
Just, just
A hundred dollars.
Correct.
Be sixty-three hundred? Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think, okay, Matt, I think we have, I mean, I, I don't know.
How, I assume these guys are gonna decide to do that, Matt, it's their decision, but I, I assume they're gonna decide to do that. If they do, how soon can y'all get it installed?
The site license, we can just go into the server and change the numbers. And I don't, unfortunately, I don't know how many computers in your office have been changed or have been installed.
None.
Okay. I can tell you right now, we are all headed to Myrtle Beach for our users conference, so it will I'd have to find out when I can get that set up.
Matt, can it be done remotely?
Yeah, it can, it would just be a little longer. I might be able to get somebody to come out. We've got one that's in the Dallas area, he might be able to come out and install it. I don't, I, I don't know, I have to ask.
Yeah, if we can, let's get that on their computers as quickly as possible, if, if, if they approve that.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Anybody have any other questions for Matt? Because I know he's on a time front right there.
Can somebody in your office start calculating what it would be for a data conversion?
We lost it.
We did discuss the data conversion in another workshop, they said it was something they could do.
Yeah, and Scott and I've been talking about it, because I don't understand all of it, but if we keep Justice Solutions, there will be hardware issues, there will be other things. They charge us twenty-two hundred dollars a month for that. So if you keep that and add it out, it's two hundred and sixty some thousand.
I talked to Daniel at Justice Solutions. We're gonna have to keep paying maintenance, or they're gonna come with that server, that server is their server. How much that maintenance is depends on how much we're gonna be using it. Right now, we're using it about, about as much as we ever did. So anything else, we could probably let it go, right?
So how much is it gonna cost to you to keep that server?
Currently, we're paying about twenty-two hundred dollars a month.
Okay, so I don't, I don't know what happened, I just lost signal.
Okay.
What Tonda was asking is, we could start calculating how much it would be for the data conversion. I've already asked Justice Solutions to give us a data package to pull from the server, what they would hand off to you if we were doing a data conversion. So we're gonna get that done, and then on y'all's side, we could find out how much it would be to do the data conversion.
Okay, we just need the data from LG, or Justice, to be able to get to my guys back at the office for them to look at, to find out.
I guess my concern was from the very beginning, when the sheriff spoke to us, this was the one that we weren't gonna have to pay for Justice Solutions. We don't have a savings there. We was gonna have a, we weren't gonna have to pay for cop scene, we'd be able to have a savings from cop scene. Where's our savings? I haven't seen any yet.
I have an invoice for Justice Solutions that we're probably gonna have to pay, because we're gonna be using it through November.
At some point, will we stop using it?
I, I don't care, I don't care if I keep Justice Solutions, if you do a data conversion. I don't care one way or the other, but, but I didn't feel like anybody had let the commissioners know that just because you didn't need Justice Solutions, didn't mean the county didn't need it. Peggy needs it, any, everybody that types up and checks and corrects judgments needs it. And that's still twenty-two hundred dollars a month for at least the next ten years. Or, or conversion. And what I'm saying is, I don't care either way. But I don't think anybody told the people in charge of the money that it was gonna still cost the same, yeah. But LGS is totally different from Justice Solutions, they're two separate things. No, LG, the, the interface is between Southern Software and LGS. It doesn't have anything to do with Justice Solutions.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Matt? He's already seated on the plane, he's Does anyone have any questions for Matt?
Tonda, I'm sorry, I know you're, you're asking a question, what was your question?
Oh, we were just talking about the, the, the data conversion, I think you answered, Scott.
Yeah, if we can just get the information from Scott on Justice Solutions, I can get my folks, and
Scott says he's already got Justice Solutions working on it, and he will email you.
We'll probably have to have it on like a flash drive or a hard drive, depending on how big the data is, and we can send it to Mark Sessom's.
It's gonna be a large, it's gonna be a large chunk of data, I'm not gonna email that to you, but I'll, I'll email you what our plan is after we've come up with it, I'll talk to Justice later.
That'll work, and I'll send you the, the contact for the send it to, which is Mark Sessom's. But whenever I land here an hour or so, I'll send you that information, that way you've got it. And then we can go from there.
All right. Jonathan with Southern Software.
Do you know Jonathan's last name?
I don't know, that's what Mickey said was just Jonathan.
Okay, I'll find out from Mickey, I'll see him here shortly as well, and I'll find out.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, man, have a good flight, buddy.
Thank, thank you, y'all, have a good day.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Scott, help me understand, because I don't understand, you know, you work with me all the time. If there's anyone in this room don't understand, it's me on this technology stuff. You know what the sheriff presented. Where, where are we at? How close are we to making all this happen, I guess? Now, maybe it's a crazy way of putting it.
We still have to get their permanent server, which is ten thousand dollars, and I was talking to Sandy about that. But we never did a budget transfer for me to buy that ten thousand, so I have to do that. Because it wasn't added to the budget. Sandy went over everything that's added to the budget, that ten thousand wasn't added for that server.
Okay. If, if, if you had the ten thousand today in your budget, how long is it gonna take to get that server?
Get the PO, and I have to And then it would take a month, two months for it to build it.
Tell me again, what's the server supposed to do?
What's gonna be the permanent server? Right now, they're on a loner server from
Yeah, just
That's gonna be their permanent server. Now, it's a different issue, they said that they couldn't put, what Mickey told me was they couldn't put the, I guess it works kind of like our VINE system, that pulls data off of the the software that we're looking for, put it there on the website, the inmate list. It pulls the data every day, or however often it does, and then it uploads that to, to the link for the site. I don't know exactly how it works, but they asked for a separate server for security reasons, that's why I set up a virtual server for it. And it's just running off of another server that we have. It didn't need a whole lot of resources just for that one part. My understanding was all they had to do was install software, make a link, talk to it, we back up and run it, and it just
Something they could pull through that firewall we set up.
Yeah, it works, just, just like the, all the other VINE system, all that.
And it's gonna take the place of the loner we have from
Permanent server, we get to build, it'll take the place of that, and then we'll own that server.
What time, downtime, we have a crossover, is it?
And there's another issue. Everybody I've talked to doesn't like the idea of doing a data conversion on top of my data. So Justice Solutions has said that that data is set at four. But we're gonna have to do that, if we're gonna do a conversion, but there's a risk. When you try to do a data conversion on top of my data, it's always a risk. So you'd have to back up to be able to go back and fix the risk without
Can we do a fabric, reload it all in the new server, then bring our current stuff to the new server? That way, it's not on top of my data. And that was another thing, a lot of the, the new stuff we put in Justice Solutions, good clean data. A lot of what come over from Net Data was corrupted. And what we had discussed in the workshop was they would pull Net Data over first, and get it up to date, and then bring over the Justice Solutions that was fresh, that we had put in, was correct. That way, we didn't bring the corrupt data from Justice Solutions over, or they didn't get a good conversion from Net Data.
No, probably have to have a cost, get that data to go in there, because they're not gonna do that for
I'm sure it will, that's the only way to get Net Data's in there clean. Otherwise, we bring everything over from Justice Solutions, we're gonna get the corrupt data in with our new clean data.
Is there a way not to pull, pull the old stuff that, some of it's already pulled over, just so we don't want to corrupt that?
They said in that, they said during that workshop that they could start a timeline and follow the Justice Solutions.
You're gonna have stuff that was touched, back and forth updated. I know, yes, in Justice Solutions.
Do you have hard copy files in there?
I don't know what they've done in the past, or
So, so if there's a hard copy, and I don't write terms here, if there's a hard copy of the referral side of it, then I'm not even sure we need to convert that. But what I, because what I have to be able to have access to forever, or for ten years, I'm walking along here, is the jail data, when they want in and out of jail, that, you know, because but you don't wanna have to look it up every time I need it, or every time Peggy needs it. So if that was, if you, if there was a way to just convert the jail side data, and not the, not the, there it is, and all the reports and all that stuff.
I should do something to do that. Just, just to work that portion, something like rest records.
Yeah, just see rest records, so jail bookings, book out, you know, all that information, because I've never
With it, while, while we're talking about this, something to throw out is, our record very much is impactful, we got a little bit of that back, impactful. Have a sit on the chair, it's sounding a little bit, just where my wire that be all started, started. At some point, I don't know, this is, this is those copies of note that could be less expensive, less expensive if you get it at house, get a basket scanner, so scanning all this, I So you have to, each thing you scan in is gonna have to be indexed, so that you have case number, parties of the case. When we looked at doing it with Rico one time, there were four or five points that had to be, had to be indexed, so that we could look it up later. Rico does that for, like, US Marshal Service and stuff, they've got all the, I'd look at how much it would be to do that again. I don't think it was as much as It's been several years.
If it's in Southern Software now, then that's essentially the site that, so you don't have to do it from your pool.
There, because you still have the hard copy for a secure time, once they're back years ago. Once they're back years ago.
Check with the Texas Archives. There's a website that tells you for all of our stuff, digital submission, we haven't made a file in four years. Which which is saying yes, autonomous.
Steve, how do you, when other counties call to find out time to serve for inmates? You know, how how do you look that at?
It's in the computer, you can look it up. If it's not, you can pull a hard copy file and first see what's.
But how do you look it up? His question is, so so if county calls and somebody who's in jail may.
Right.
How do you look it up now? Are you using Justice Solutions? So you're still using it too?
So are we gonna get rid of Justice Solutions?
So my understanding of those two lines are your Justice Solutions. Then contract, which has had a couple, two licenses from Sheriff's Office. Certainly done, just got, just got the working itself. So it happens to spend, same work, there's those several licenses of the computers at the Sheriff's Office and the stuff. But if they, that data will work in Southern Software. So all you need is the rest records and book in information. You don't need any of the stuff from there it is.
Right.
Any of that stuff.
I don't have access, yeah.
Do you need to look that back at? I mean. What's the cases, only good stuff though. It's also all fields, everything. Put on the capital. Let's kinda go for her.
Yes, yeah, capital cases will go for her. But you'll have some, um, you'll have some mandated number of years that you have to keep everything. But it's lying in digital, you don't have to have a hard copy.
See now, if everything to do with Southern, we can actually scan in our documents and we have a great safe.
Yeah, pictures, but but they could scan it, scan it in the state and see if it's.
Ken, he's talking about scanning paperwork in and making digital files. That kinda along with y'all talking about doing on the fourth floor is the A R P money. So that would all, we could kinda roll that in together with it.
Yes, he can get both of that same.
And they, they'll take it a little bit of the time, but I don't want to be all of it.
If you need, I mean, every time I call to find something, they call me, they call me by that.
Then your stuff.
Come up there and I call them, say, I don't even know it was version, it's code time. That they found out a lot of the protection that's in the express, basically going to them.
Hey, Scott, how much money is it gonna save us when we get the permanent server and do away with the loan? How much money is that gonna save?
Huh? We're not paying for the loan. It's not gonna cost us anything different. It's still, we got ten thousand dollars for permanent server and that it's.
Is there something different between the server you're buying and the one they've given us? We just buy the one we got working now?
Well, the one I can buy is a lot more robust. A lot more robust.
And if we wanna do the backup, we'll need a little bit at first so we don't run the live data. Who owns the loan?
They should, so.
Let's see if big savings in any of this.
No, they're not, not, it's not a savings, it's actually more expensive. I mean, because I was under, I was under the impression, and may have just been me, that we're gonna get rid of uh of Justice, Justice Solutions. And now today I hear, well, we'll probably need to keep a couple of licenses.
No, we can do the data conversion, we can drop the whole thing. But she's already canceled one, I think we have to say, seven thousand dollars. The guard line.
Which one?
Guard line.
Guard one. So, and I'm still confused on, we talked about four twenty-five, it's actually five twenty-five. It's gonna be five twenty-five, how many times?
Twelve times.
Twelve times?
Sixty-three hundred dollars.
And I made it totally wrong because I felt like he was giving the lawyer and such. The way I understood it was five twenty-five times twelve the first year. And then one hundred times twelve each year after that.
So for our next year budget, it'll add twelve hundred to the.
Right, twelve hundred. It would add twelve hundred to our, to our money.
But then we could have unlimited access everywhere we got the license.
Anybody.
So what they lend to twelve license though.
Right.
I wonder.
Maybe just we draw those county that's better for it.
Yeah.
Why can't he add that for your N D I S? He can, we can do the same thing. And the hope was that when these police departments would be banned, they'd have that. That landed back down. Actually, it's under population of copsing. Everyone, oh, those. So the reason why we keep copsing is for the ones that didn't go together. The reason we gather around now is because that, I guess, the security diagram that we said we resubmitted. D P S, whoever approved, they had to start running people. I saw that Mickey said we were third.
Is there any way we can get rid of it before we have to pay that? So we're gonna have to pay, how much is that?
We've already paid it.
Twenty-two hundred.
Yeah, we already, we already paid that same.
For a year? Okay.
That also wasn't a question. What? That wasn't a question.
What I gather from talking to the police departments, Southern Software made a deal they was happy with. They were just concerned that we were gonna charge them, we would put the firewall and the internet line from access. We talked about applying the charge to them for that. We never made a decision or took action on it. They don't wanna sound or compensate until they know what we're doing.
Well, we're in process too. I got the line solved and gotta get this logic to the sheriff. We got to be over everything for that. We were gonna wait till we make sure things go smoothly with.
We're all right.
Say our best. By the time we take a call, it's like that. It's not one call, they text nothing there. Also, they almost steal. Reporting system is set, runs down to the floors. See, the hunger now.
Well, what they were saying were more budgetary, they know what Southern Software costs them. But they don't wanna commit to it and be locked into whatever we do without knowing what it's gonna cost.
I think if they do, if they do it, they're liking it. We can see, because I just started skinning everybody's soul. I don't know what's gonna do. Because I think I've got those rolling on, who's on the stalls, I go back, they got, our guys have eight kills. I call, I'm hoping to see where all my people are. Official, they're always about that, say, that this issue. Are. We should be seeing a comp time over.
So what?
A comp time and overtime sentence.
Are we seeing it?
We will, yeah, it's already, I said, we've already.
Andy, you had a question?
Yes, I did, I believe it's verification from what a site license means to software solution. They have told us we got four more licenses, we now have a site license. So does that mean we don't have any more licenses in the future or not? What does a site license mean to them? That's what I don't quite understand.
It's not license, it's open to the infinite number of licenses. What they're doing, what they're gonna do. If we buy four more licenses, they do away with the problem we have with the concurrency issue.
Okay, does that site include Karen and Sheriff's Office?
It's for the entire account. It's it's just a switch on server to go from six to five.
Now, how long is it gonna be before we get, and what do we need to get it where? It it it's on the, our website, the inmate list is on the website, because I think Tonda said the FBI looks at that.
Well, all the, all the defense attorneys look at it.
All the defense attorney. Well, how, what what's holding us up on that?
Their program getting active.
Who's the program, Southern Software?
Guy named Jonathan was on the software.
That's what it's you. Mickey, and who was it we were talking to and taking his office today? He said.
That was, oh, that was uh John, Thomas, Thomas.
Well, Thomas said Jonathan. He he said Jonathan again.
Thomas, he sharp, you know, yeah.
And so the servers that are ready to go, apparently there's a piece of software he's gotta go on there. I don't know how long it's gonna take for me to get that work and everything. Maybe a day, maybe a week. Hold on.
Right now, I can tell you quite complete on the program there. Jayla almost deleted that inmate. I thought Karen, you can't, Jackson's just set up not ready to reveal. We set up, so. This is before we, we had training on Thursday with Thomas. But before that, we were trying to figure it out because we're having users. So we were on there and Jayla was looking at a couple of things. And something came up on our computer saying, are you sure you wanna delete this inmate? She was in a panic. I was in a panic, I'm like, back up. You know, and now she's scared to get in because we're frightened to make any kind of state, you know, flip a button. Remind, go on.
You should limit that on a future level.
If the sheriff puts me in jail, I'll call. Delete me.
You wanna be in jail.
Yeah, I'll call. I'll let him know you're there.
You go to jail, you're fucked.
So it looks like to me we're looking at ten thousand dollars over.
Ten thousand dollars over.
We're looking at sixty-three hundred dollar.
Eighty-four hundred for the first year.
Oh.
No, no, sixty-three.
Sixty-three.
It's five twenty-five.
Times twelve.
I bet it's sixteen, sorry, I know that's fourteen, okay.
We've already paid, we've already paid it for six of them. I'm only paying twelve more, so it's sixty-three hundred.
And we're looking at twenty-two hundred for copsing.
Which we've already paid.
Twenty-two hundred a month for Justice Solutions.
At least for another month.
Twenty-two hundred a month for Justice Solutions?
Probably two more months because there's, there's no way we can do the new server, the conversion. Which is all stuff they usually do in six months. We only gave them two months to do.
Twenty-one eighty. Justice Solutions. Twenty-one eighty?
Yeah, twenty-one eighty fifty.
That's per month though.
Yeah.
And none of that was budgeted.
None of that's.
Well, I say what what budget is, is budgeted. I mean, not nine.
Contingents.
That's it, right. That's it, right there. Hello.
Oh, contingents. So you you're thinking within six months, we'll be doing away with it twenty-two hundred.
They're two months.
Two months, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, the pushback we'll get is from.
Since we've already paid copsing, I think, I don't think we can get that in the back. I think we've got copsing for another year or anything.
So, yeah.
The only problem is that your dispatchers have to do things twice. No, they don't do it. Okay. Or they have to do things at copsing and then something. It's just for then. A couple of months ago, you have to talk amongst amongst other agencies. It's gonna see where any agency is, it's on copsing, you can say. It's good right now, but. Our last, last points.
So the only, the only one that the Commissioners Court would need to approve is the sixty-three hundred.
This, or we still gotta get the. And that ten thousand, the ten thousand is the server.
We'd already agreed to do that.
But it wasn't put in.
Right, we just. I mean, that'd be a budget amendment. Yeah, okay.
All right, just take it out of contingents.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what it's there for.
Yeah.
And uh.
So is that something we can keep going today?
Yeah, it's not on there for Winston, no.
That's something we want to pay to bill on. I mean, I don't want to keep them at their accident.
They'll have to sign a new contract and and he has to find out and install it already, so I don't know how long their future.
I'll give the Sandy on the budget increase. I'm gonna have that on there since we can.
Okay.
Let y'all have a special session to do that.
We still have budget amendments.
We have budget amendments. Well, it's not a budget amendment, so we're seeing increase.
No.
Oh, we have to transfer agency over. Used to, we didn't have a agency, so that's the emergency.
Yeah.
I think in all ways.
Yeah.
That can still be added, yes.
Yeah, I think it could still be added.
So I'll work with Sandy.
We need it taken care of Winston.
I get the budget amendments with Sandy today, then we'll have that Wednesday. And but we can already start working on the install.
That's what happened.
You can do the the sixty-three hundred stuff.
And since it's all in motion, I'm sure they'll switch from the server and it's already had the side licenses, there's no one.
But they'll have to comment, like, we don't have.
So what are you gonna need from the Commissioners Court?
Just budget amendments, or maybe.
Budget amendment. It's just budget, we're just approving the budget amendment.
Is there a contract?
There's, yeah.
For Southern?
Yeah.
Only, okay, can you make sure we get?
Oh, you know, that, make sure.
It's not, it doesn't mention it in the contract that we had now. Well, you're adding. Yeah, it's a different contract because we're, we're adding, I mean, we're going to add more to it.
From six to eighteen.
Yeah. And then we're going to sign.
Yeah, we want the word to be there that that.
Where it was. Sign. We, yeah, and then, and and I think all these, I think we're, I speak for y'all, we're, we're available. I mean, if we need to have us another call, meeting, special session, we can.
Maybe, I don't know, so what you said. Be, have a take us to talk to about side licenses for the N D I S, to see what that costs, we put all this together. I mean, nobody else, your folks get into that, but seven, I was thought it was kinda low. You guys gotta test it into it. Give it to you. Let's probably.
Oh, okay, Scott, we're gonna do the line item transfer or or budget. We're gonna do the budget amendments. Let me know if you need on the agenda.
For a contract.
For 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 the contract deal to be approved, but we can go ahead and do budget amendments to cover this.
I think if we have to take a motion, we can wait until court after next.
That, that's what I think. I think you go ahead and start working on this.
Yeah.
And do the budget amendments. And then if you, once we get. And then if, once we get that contract, let Tonda look over it.
Right.
Uh, and her approve it and the sheriff. If I mean, please, everyone, let everyone look. And, and let me just say this, guys. If we all work like this all the time, we get somewhere. It's.
I'm sorry, Joe.
Oh, that's fine.
They could just do one remote on Laura's computer. For now, you could, you have to, you have to limit it with six. At, at least that gives us something, one person that looks up and.
I really think the easiest part of this is gonna be turning that site license.
Okay.
Because they're in our server to backups and anything else anyway, I think. They probably have support people that are at that conference that can just do that part, and then you're, you're done with that, and then they get Laura alone. And I looked at her computer, I wasn't sure where they stopped, was he even stopped, but I can.
They couldn't get us the.
Right.
They did that.
But we just remote, we go along with. That's, yes. In fact, I think Rusty had them set up with admin rights for that itself.
Yeah.
But then they, they didn't, they missed that opportunity and then took that out again. So, but we can always change that back on the next one.
Don't know.
So there's gonna be two more weeks.
To get Laura going, we'll just remote with them and work with them to get it.
Okay.
Some of this stuff.
And let's just.
Take some pressure off.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I'll work with Sandy on the budget amendments, get the contract. Get Laura set up.
Yeah. Well, we do appreciate you guys, and we've, we're all in it together. We want it to work. I mean, that, I want it to work, but, uh.
It'll be efficient when it's done. Oh, well, the data can work, that's the other steps. So you want. You want that data to a point, and then you want else, or Justice Solutions from there. If not. Were we either, were we into the dead dad? We don't want the dad to crash the whole Justice Solutions. Right. We picked up a justice solution the first day they filed that dad. I'm not a hundred percent sure it's gonna be changed, because there may be, I don't know, I'm just having a discussion. Everybody I can talk to, but worst case, we have to bring just the jail part off of Justice Solutions. For promise. Right. That's, that's.
Keith?
Where's this put us, Steve, or whoever can answer, with our constables? Are they on, are they the war, they're on the system? Are they gonna be on?
Yeah, they haven't asked, but I was saying that's something they wanna do, but I forget at least about their budgets as far as. We did the site licenses for the NDIS. Yeah. Yeah, that should be helping it up.
No, the constables cannot see, and keep in mind only, not, not all the constables. But, um, the ones who are active cannot see who's in jail, who's not, right now here.
They, they can run a jail list. We, Patty sends us a jail list every day. She sent it to me, and we view it, we used to view it to see how many outsourced we had. But we, we haven't been able to get to outsource, but we do see people in jail with a small picture of the inmate.
Yeah, Patty has, has, um, uh, Southern on the.
Well, we get the, we get a thing going on the web that extends inmate lists, that, that would cover that to the constables that I can just need to see.
Right.
In jail, they're not. They, they don't know about marks, they don't, they wouldn't check marks and stuff for that. They never had. They're on, they're on their own, opposite classes, they just.
Not all of them.
Well, all of it, all of it wants to be.
So it's my understanding right now, the two of our constables officers had no software in which to write reports for you.
I know, he uses copsing. And he was.
Keith?
Okay, Mickey uses copsing, did I recognize it? But it's my understanding that that's not.
I thought Pat was getting back, but he got set up with Southern.
Yeah, it's not yet.
Okay. Cause he was on Justice Solutions.
I don't, I said each castle is their own agency.
And then all the different things, yeah.
So we're all the, we're all on the same.
Yeah.
Let's see, I think he already does.
Keith, Keith is copsing and he likes it. Very good. Keith.
Pat Bob said he's.
Each castle, office.
Yes.
Cause right before the change, you gave Pat access to Justice Solutions, and Pat Bob said they were gonna talk to you about Southern, I guess, and our. But that would be another reason to give side licenses on the others.
Well, we just wanna make sure that we, we don't wanna come back to Southern and. Take advantage of this, tell them we only want twelve more licenses, and then they work with us at half price and switch it over to a site. And then, then we saw, okay, we wanted to do that, then we thought, we wanna do the right thing too. So we need to let them know upfront, if this is gonna, we're gonna put our constables on this. But. Well, just because somebody messes us around, I don't mean we're gonna mess him around.
Patty shut up.
Yeah. It would probably take a workshop with the constables, because they're all gonna be different. I talked to Heath, he's not gonna, as, a few weeks ago, he didn't, he had no interest in going.
He, he likes copsing.
He likes copsing.
If Heath and Mickey pick the copsing, do they start playing copsing?
They do out of their own love.
They do, yes.
Cause they're their own agencies, they have.
Yes, they have, they budget for copsing. Mickey was the one that asked me if he was gonna be able to get to Southern. So.
Mickey was?
Yes, ma'am. But so that's what he's laying forward, I guess. Well, are the constables paying the same twenty-two hundred we're paying?
For sure. I've never been. Yeah, should be minimal. And I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing if Mickey wanted his own Southern software license, he'd give him eight hundred and fifty dollars for, or what, I mean.
Could the constable use the site?
If we had the site, we didn't worry about it.
Yeah.
But again, back to Keith's point, that's kinda taking advantage of Southern. We don't want Keith up in.
I'll reach out to, I'll reach out to Southern next Sunday to see what it costs for a site license.
Was two hundred and sixty-eight.
Official, especially if the constable's on the other. You know, site license, everything. We did open those thing up. I'm sorry, you're just. Now, work.
I'm just good, so thank you. All minds clear?
Yeah, so.
Steve, he still said, I'll give it to you. Thank you, I might feel good, I feel like, okay. I'm looking at sixty-three hundred dollars.
He did, he just didn't know what it was.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, I do appreciate you guys, uh, we appreciate everybody. I think it, you know, it seems like to me, I know these guys up here sometimes, like, oh my God, how long you gonna let it go on? I think it helps. I think it helps when we come into the room, we sit here and we work through it. It sure helps us all, if we just do that, when we walk out of the room. Uh, let's just work together and do what each, you know, I'll do what I can. And everything, but we do appreciate you for being here. Thank you, see ya. We are adjourned.